Yeah, we just get it and go there. There's one, I have to, it's really interesting to go to the little section. Try that place.
Certainly, let me know. Uh, it's kind of worth it.
It's all good. Say, and you got Tyler in your later place. And then I'm gonna check. Callie.
Well, you don't.
That's, that's, that's. It's now. We're gonna have their like. Well, I don't know. I didn't promise voice. We were talking about. Well, he's.
Yeah.
It's always a problem. I didn't know. It goes where? Do you do right? I have that. I have some chairs. I want to think about that. So that's the beginning. I think it was. Well, I know that would generate. So one of the parties trying to look at this. Something after that. He did.
Yeah, that's it. Because it was, uh, far and recent.
I got this. So we're just, I guess you call. That's. Uh, three. That's. That's. That. Where we best for that has. From the ability you're up there. Like, I'm just. Actually, it's. Thanks, you're very good. Oh, red. What world would I start down?
So I'll stand for the regular meeting of the City of Elswood Council for Monday, November thirteenth. The city pledge. Uh, pledge of allegiance to the United States. And to the public, which is next. One nation under God, indivisible. We've never seen a bad problem. First time in our agenda tonight. Before we do anything, let's, um, let's just be thankful for Wednesday. She passed away November fourth. The, um, work she's done in the City of Elswood and just as a person is this fantastic. Um, unbelievable person. And I just wanted to mention that before we, you know, started the city council meeting. But that had happened. There's a lot of information going to be in the paper. There was last week and there'll be even more this week. So did you learn more about her accomplishments there? Um, great lady, very supportive of myself and many of the people up here. So wanted to make mention of that. She certainly will be missed. Um, but as we move forward in consent agenda, we want to approve the October twenty-third city council meeting minutes. We have the claim ordinance A zero one dash one zero two three. And the airport advisory board minutes for November of twenty twenty-three.
So having a question for the consent agenda. Uh, October twenty-third city council minutes, same ordinance eight zero one dash one zero two three. And the airport advisory minutes for November twenty-third.
I'm glad. Councilor Hanson has made a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilor Scrichfield has seconded that motion. Any questions or concerns? All right, hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Um. Wanted to make another announcement here before we start petitions, delegations to congratulate Don for your victory. Darcy and Jessica and for Wayne, you know, for running. You gotta put your hat in the ring and I don't know too many politicians that win every single race. So, um, certainly appreciate all of you and we look forward to working with you, Don. And, you know, Wayne, I'm sure we'll, we'll be talking again soon. And, um, like we said earlier, we might be envious of everybody in January. So, um, this is, this is, it's, it's a meaningful job and at the same time it does take a toll. And so maybe taking a break will be good too. So, um, one said, so the next item on our agenda, citizens and delegations, for all comments. Please state your full name and whether you're a Elswood city resident. All comments are limited to five minutes per subject unless city council has further questions. Would there be anybody interested in making public comments?
And you know, I would.
Yep, come on up.
Yep. It's gonna be real easy, wonder.
Uh, I was asked and plus I've been thinking about it. On the downtown city sidewalks, we have the new meter reader domes that's on the top of the, the, the steel or cast iron housings. I can see maybe a Good Samaritan that would want to clean the sidewalks for the city some afternoon or some evening. But get the snow off, not knowing that there are those domes on there. And they could make a whole pile of them down at the end of the block. Is there any way that those could be put on the underneath side or would they not transmit? I just, the only question I have, because I see anybody that's gonna be doing the city a favor could actually do harm to those. And that's all I have.
I'm gonna have to look into custom making lids. We did have a meeting out there a while back and, um, we did shave them down to at least get them into ADA compliance. However, comment, um, we, the one option is we can get a plastic lid, but we're concerned about those that are breaking easily. So I'm gonna try to talk to some of our local vendors to see if they will fabricate a lid for us. I was gonna talk to Mako.
Or I don't know, it's a possibility. I was thinking that no more than we have on downtown Main Street, those meters would still probably be manually bred, couldn't they? As a last resort, I know.
It's the last.
Which we're, I didn't spend the money to put them on there, but. If they go down just one time and I know whatever, I'm gonna lose them all. So that's just something to think about.
Okay. So I have, thank you. Thank you, Don. Sorry, Mary, I don't know.
No, that's quite right. Um, anyone else like to?
Is this where you want me?
Yeah, Jeanie, come on up.
I'm Jeanie Klein. I cannot live in the city, but I think I have a city issue. I'm here on behalf of. Right, we're wrong. Cowtown Girls Dancing Trailer. The trailer is currently being housed at Debbie's house at Star Park's, uh, garage. For a long time, the building was stored in a Tammy. McGreevy's, McGreevy's father's garage. Um, once he passed and Tammy became less involved, the trailer has kind of been going house to house to house kind of flip a hobby. Um, everybody wants it to be part of the city and part of the activities of the county. No one really has the extra space in their garage to keep up with it. It is the size of a small trailer. In addition to the trailer, there is also some other prepared stuff, mobility, backdrop, staging, things that also need to be kept. Close to the proximity, which is not the case currently. So my question is, is there somewhere the city has access that we can store that? Is that an option? Um, I have looked at storage units. They're between eighty and a hundred and twenty dollars per month. Wondering if there's somewhere else that can spend those funds to benefit all of us.
And the trailer's deteriorating, so it needs to be underruled quickly. Um, and the park's deteriorated, so it's, um, it's been around since I think the late eighties, early nineties. It's traveled the state. Stacy Schmidt's dad built it. So it's got a strong emotional attachment to the community. And when Tammy was less involved, um, when I first took a look at it, my first thought was this is gonna be an issue.
Yep.
And it is. So people used it. They took it to chess, check fest, four Harper days. They love it. The dance girls love it. They want it, but nobody has the space, especially on the roof. So guess we look at the fire department, they couldn't store it. So now she's come to the city to see if, you know, there's a way, a building or something to put it in.
I would have to check what the department is. Hey, chief, do you, what is the availability inside the, uh, the shed on Gate Street?
Well, we consider the gate shed, it's on Gate Street. Um, uh, there is room in there, I would say. That's currently where we house a handful of the, uh, downtown decoration, the holes for the, the Christmas lighting, stuff like that. I think some of our concern is it was brought to us before when it used to be out at the armory, the rec center. It used to be stored in the south end of that. And Ronnie had to work around it every day and we were asked to, this can't be out there anymore. It's not ours, not under our control. Um, and it was brought up and be put in, into the gate shed, but it was like, we don't wanna be working around it either. When they're gonna decide, uh, a, uh, skister in there moving stuff around, it'd be Patrick with all his golf equipment he keeps down there. We keep all the police cars down there. Uh, the barbecue keeps three or four vehicles down there and, and, uh, along with a couple of their tractors or. Elements or something, I'm not a water guy, but, um, if possible, there's space for it. I'm not, I'm definitely not saying there's not, but. Our fear would be, at least mine from my perspective, is we wanna bury it into a corner so it's the least intrusive out of our way. But that's gonna take an afternoon to, um, to dig it out once a year just to get it out for. You know, I understand these would be protected and I get that. I just, um, I'm, I'm probably also just kinda healed to all the department has to have stuff in there, not just me. But I know that was kind of what we talked about in the past with that same, cause that was, when it was moved from there, we put it there and we, we know. Cause it's still not ours, it's still not our responsibility. It's not, if it gets broke, we're not gonna be responsible for it. That was kind of some of our fears.
And precedent was said when we asked the, the, them to move the stuff out of the, uh, rec center because of storage. Off car shed.
I don't think any of the air, did anybody have space in an airplane hangar? What's going on there? You know, we're gonna be building that shed for, there's no equipment. Is there room off to the side for that too? I mean, I, maybe an option. Cause there's gonna be a lot less movement in and out of that building than, than what we have access to every day.
Yeah, sounds good. That's a good idea. Can you check on that?
Of course, that will be built for a while, I believe, but at least it's a long-term option. You make a short term, a short-term solution, but that being a long-term.
Sure, okay. Jeanie, thanks, chief. Is there, you okay with that?
Okay, I'll verify my department heads.
Okay, so Dustin's on hold up.
Yep, right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanie.
Thank you.
And while she's up here, um, I made a video, we kind of made an announcement and they put it on Facebook. We are gonna have Cowtown August second and third, twenty twenty-four, uh, twenty twenty-four. Um, you know, it's gonna be very different. Uh, we're gonna expect more from as far as, uh, just different things that we haven't done in the past. So we're just gonna have to be a little bit more open-minded. You know, beyond that, we don't know. We'll just have to see how it goes and got a budget for one year and we'll just see how it goes and hopefully people like it. And I don't know, where are you, where are you in the bands? I mean, have you made progress?
Yes, at this point, we have contracts from, uh, nationally based, uh, state, uh, Lindsay Kelson.
She's out of Nashville?
She's out of Nashville.
Okay.
And then we, um, have contracts from Scotty Alexander, who has traveled in throughout the globe on a, um. Country music platform and he's actually from Houston, but he's performed on the Ellen show. He's done a lot of back behind the scenes on different TV shows, being their musical base. He's done production, he's got a huge, uh, following from the Country Music Academy. We're really excited about having those studios and that's something we've not done for on a large scale.
Right, so these will be, this will draw a lot of people in. So chief, you're gonna be challenged. You and the sheriff will be challenged space-wise. Uh, Priesthood Park is where it's gonna happen. How to control that area, talking to neighbors, just there are a lot of logistics that will have to occur. So you're just kinda hearing it for the first time. So, um, these bands will be a draw. And so we've kind of gotta be ready. So it's exciting, but there's still gonna be a lot of work, still need some volunteers, but, but just wanted to say that.
There are a couple of logistics involved and the Saturday night events are a huge draw in front of the bands. But let's not forget the effect, the family night, Friday night. And we are bringing a mobile screen in and showing the Venus friendly in Panto movie that night. And our department is going to be selling barbecue.
Right, sounds exciting. Thank you. Can you appreciate? All right, so anybody else petition to the delegations? No one?
Yes, please.
Okay, come on up. Are you Debbie?
Yes, hi.
Uh, new year.
Hello, everyone.
Nice to meet you.
Um, so my husband and I made a very poor offer where, uh, we just purchased a house at three O'Leary Court Avenue. We just took possession in, you know, August, or actually still trying to move stuff in. It's a secondary home, so we're only gonna be, um, here maybe a total of four to five months throughout the year. So I haven't been paying trash because we really haven't been here, but we haven't been in the water and the sewer and the pool and the franchise. So I was under the impression that if it was okay to not have trash, because we're out here. But then I was told about the city ordinance, which I understand. But we're part-time. Like I said, we're only gonna be here maybe four to five, um, times a year. So I was just looking to see if you might consider, um, not, um, trash once a month, paying for it. Maybe, um. Only when we're here, it might only be once a month or for a week or maybe two weeks a month that we would pay that month while we're here. Um, or pro-rated, something like that.
So it's only the trash, that's the issue.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't think about water, you know, cause I assume you gotta pay water and sewer anyway, whether you use here or not. Um, and I don't know if I could stop that while we're not here, but trash was the thing that came up first. Because when I paid the water and sewer for the first couple of months, it wasn't an issue. I wasn't questioning why we weren't paying the trash. So I just thought, well, we don't have to pay the traps. We just take the little bit home that we have here with us in Michigan. So I didn't know that that was going to be a thing until, um. When we came to town. And then it was the, it was brought up that it was city ordinance. So if there's a way to maybe like have vacation homers, I don't know if there's anybody else that does what we've done here. We just bought it for secondary vacation, just visiting. I don't know if there's anything that can be done that way for part-timers in Elswood.
Okay, so Dustin, you wanna, um, add that we do have people who stay here for six months out of the year and then cancel their water account.
Okay.
Um, and while their water, because the way the ordinance is structured, we bill it with the water bill. So what they do is they shut off the water for the times they're not here. Built forever, the services, as long as you have an active water account, an active water, uh, the bill, the trash will be billed to you. So what a lot of them do is they cancel their, uh, they, 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 they turn off the water for the time they're not here.
Oh, okay. All right.
And that was a stage you honor, having a league and it's running.
Right, right. I didn't know that was an option, so it was just, okay. All right, well, I guess we're good then. Thank you for having us.
Sure, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for trust.
Yeah, so basically what you'll do is when you leave in January or whatever, just cut everything off, right?
Well, we're not here like, we're not here from like January or October to December. We might be here, um, sometime in May. We might be here sometime in July. We might be here sometime in August. So it's not a solid five months straight. Uh, so like, we're here now, uh, we're here now because we're able to, to bring our stuff and actually move our stuff in. But we'll be gone by December the first. And then we might not be back until March. So it's not gonna be six months, it would be like four months. But then when we come back, we might only be here two weeks.
Right.
So I don't know how that works with the water then. Do we just say we're leaving and then you say we're coming back or?
I will have to work with my utility clerk, but I would assume it would have to be just a coordinated thing.
Okay.
And my, my, one of my points of, when you emailed us was bringing you in here is let the council hear this. Um, to see if there are more people like this and if we need to do something different, we don't know. I mean, you may be a one-off, you may just be you and your husband. But there may be more people doing this. We may have to look at, hey, how do we do this? And how do we, how do we do this in a way that's easy on the utility clerk, where the city benefits too? And so wanted you to expose the whole council at the same time, like you did.
Yeah.
And so they can kind of understand that, hey, maybe, maybe we need to make a little bit of a change here, so. But you'll get back to her, Dustin?
Um, Kelly said she wanted to try that. Okay, she's, that, that's more her cup of tea, go ahead.
I wanted to, I asked if I should.
Please.
Okay, so we actually, what Dustin is kind of talking about is we have snowbirds. So we have people who are gone for three months consecutively, like they do not come back. They do not live there. They don't cancel their water per se, they just don't have to pay trash because they are not living there. It's not, they don't turn off their water though.
Well, that, that's how this whole thing came about, because it was only about the trash. Cause, um, we didn't pay trash when we took possession of the house. And that's when we came in, um, and when I was getting the bills emailed to me, I was just not paying the trash and it was fine.
So you mean you just left that money or that amount off of what you paid? Or you just weren't getting, or you weren't getting billed for trash at all?
No, it, there, it was on the bill. But, um, I explained to Angela that we weren't there, so we weren't having trash. So she just said, well, just don't pay it, just pay minus the trash. So that's what I did for a couple of months. And then when I came in, we were in time in October, renting a load of furniture and stuff. So instead of mailing the bill, I personally went in just to say hi to everybody. And then, um, I didn't pay the trash on that bill. And then I got a phone call from Angela saying, well, you're leaving in the house, you need to pay the bill because it's city ordinance. And I said, well, we're not living there yet and it's only gonna be part-time anyway. So that's how all this started.
So was there water being used when you, when she called you about the trash?
What was that?
Was there water being used at the time when she questioned that? Cause if there's water being used, we do have to bill you trash.
Water was being used because we had a painter in our house painting. We weren't there.
I'm guessing that's what triggered it though, is they saw water usage.
She said that, yeah, but I said, well, we're not there and there's a painter and they're painting our house.
Just point to the calendar. We got caught up there, I'm guessing.
Well, not only that, when you read the ordinance, it doesn't sound like we're fully applying it either. We were trying to find a middle ground to help our constituents, but maybe we can alter the ordinance a bit to try to give my staff some more flexibility.
And some more nights.
Right. Because if you read it, it's just states, the way I interpret it, when I read it is, um, if you have water, you have to have a trash bill to. And so that's when I gave her guidance, that was how I read it. But then I still found out about how we've been applying it. So maybe this is an opportunity for us.
Make a couple of changes. We wanna attract people like you. I mean, you know, we don't wanna push people away.
Sure.
And anything we can do to help a little. So I'm glad we did the, just to make some changes and, and I'm sure either Kelly or Dustin will be back in touch with you. They'll also email all this, you know.
Yeah.
Once we figure this out, sound good?
Yes.
Thank you for jumping in, Kelly.
Sounds great.
Thank you, Jenny, appreciate it. Thanks for telling me.
Thanks for coming.
All right, so anybody else petitions and delegations? Nobody else? Okay. All right, on to unfinished business. We have the case number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one. Um. This is. Wow, I don't know what this is.
Got it done, done. Come on up, sir.
Okay, uh, well, this is the, there were any story here. Well, this case actually started August of twenty twenty-two. Uh, was initially recognized and, uh, you've got a brief agenda item there where it starts off with the, uh. Mr. Urban being served a violation notice on his home. After which by, uh, initially said that he was going to have a contractor come and fix it, but after he ended up digging out his house. No contractor wanted to even read the house to work on it. So he was stuck. And, uh, he was been in here several times. He's been in here more times than I am. And, uh. He has been continued, continued. So, uh, eventually I think he ran out of gas and he said, I'm out of here, I'm going to the supply. And, uh, said he was turning the house over to a mortgage, to a mortgage company. Um. It's not his year, but I did, uh, send certified letter to the mortgage company, which is really united out of Indianapolis. And informed them that the property had been certain reducing its violation. And according to our ordinance, which is eight twelve oh fifty, if the property's got a violation order on it, then, uh. It has to be served, self-transfer mortgage lease or otherwise disclose of another until provisions, the violation order being complied with. Or until the property owner shall first finish that or the person buying it is knowledgeable that he is getting that and he's been affected.
Yeah.
So, um, hadn't heard anything out of Mr. Urban until last week. He contacted, uh, Delvin Benton Brock, the city building inspector, said that he's got funds and he is going to get a debt. And then the next day called back and said, well, he was having issues with contractor. Well, this is kind of deja vu because this is where we were at months and months and months ago. Couldn't get a contractor. So, uh, uh, Delvin and myself and, uh, Dustin had a meeting in regards to this. And, uh, the thought was that, uh, Mr. Urban needs to show us. That he is, uh, going to actively proceed with it, that I'm not just give it while it's served. And so, uh, I think, uh, now what we're looking at now is actually going to serve with notice that, uh, the house is to be mitigated unless he can come up and fix it. So.
Permission to, yeah, I'm in there. Thank you pretty much. Um, I've been, I talked to Melissa this morning and the resolution example you have in front of you is something she helped me out with. Thanks, Melissa. Um, at the process that she has guided me through in order to even start this process, we have to have an official public hearing by a resolution. And, um, so I'm requesting council's permission to, uh, move forward with this resolution. That still gives Mr. Urban time. He did come in before the meeting and talked to me. I was pretty assertive with him, stating that I feel it's unsafe. And we're trying to look down to your safety and if I don't have a contract, not gonna recommend to you that we, uh, give any more time. So I'm requesting council permission to follow through with the, executing this resolution with Melissa's guidance and tutelage. And, uh, that'll still give him time to, uh, to get his stuff together. But the public meeting would be set for the first meeting in, uh, December, which, um. Looking at my calendar. Would be December eleventh.
Oh, that's good. Not a problem.
Yeah.
Sweet.
Yeah. Um, but he did tell me that he's working with Travis Swordfinger. And then the horrible price he's given me is twenty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. But without a contract, a group of down payment, I personally don't recommend that we give any more time. That's my reason. This has been going on for how many months?
How much year?
A year, yeah.
Now, I, I thought that we had a public hearing and we may have had sort of quasi-public hearing, but I don't have it anywhere in my record that we actually did this process, which is the. Abatement process, formal resolution for public hearing and then. We've been through the process.
Now, we gave him more time, a couple of times, I think, or two times, two different occasions. So if I'm with him, I mean, enough. Let him start the whole process. Start. Get the decent bill.
And then I get a vote. That's true. May request. I, yes, Tyler's online, but I don't know if he would hear me.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Thank you, Tyler.
Yep.
Any motion?
Do you want a motion to approve this resolution? Is there an issue? No.
It's twenty twenty, uh, I believe we're number eleven, right, Kelly?
Sorry, I was muted. Um, you have. Yeah, twenty twenty-three dash eleven is your newest one, would be your newest one.
Thank you, Kelly.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash eleven.
Hold on a second. Counselor Coach has made a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven. Counselor Johnson has seconded that motion. Any discussion, concerns? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. We're going to pass that resolution. We'll move the process forward. If he'll get notified in general, we should have a form.
Yeah, I was gonna, do we have an updated billing address for him? Do you have an updated warning address for Mr. Urban?
Yes, we do.
Good. Good. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, really. Thanks, Steve. Yeah, I appreciate it.
All right, the next item on our agenda will be the Kirk of Michael updates. Come on, John. Before I forget, ask, I want to ask you a question of the multi-use path.
I'm going to go for.
Someone asked, can they ride a bike?
Absolutely.
Yes.
I, I said, I think they're.
I can buy. That's why it's tipy wide, actually, because it does accommodate pedestrians.
Got you. Skateboarding.
Not yet. They're still four to five.
Right. But no motorized vehicles. No go, no golf carts. No golf cart.
Those blow up the streets.
Right.
Good question. Yes, when it is complete, pedestrians and bicyclists alike will be welcome on the path. Uh, so that's a perfectly segue to the first item on my list here is a multi-use path. Uh, but I typed it note that Wednesday, last weekday, just have the dirt work done, but they now have placed. Two sections of concrete. So again, contracted moving forward, we're getting that path put in place. Uh, once all the concrete is put in place, hopefully they'll have to finish that work to do the dirt work and the seating and the road control. So. It's probably going to be at least a month or two months before we're ready to wrap it up and put it to use. But we're, we're getting progress.
Sir, Mr. Uh, Mayor, may I ask? Sure, question. So somebody asked a question and I didn't know quite the answer. Um, the uh, is the sidewalk going to go across the streets?
Yes, the, the street, the side streets like Yellinett Drive and those going down there to the south, it will cross those streets. They are. Skipping them for now. Uh, but there will be a con- any of the gravel streets that will have a concrete path right across the street as well. Uh, now we West Douglas and Thorney Ave. It is uh flat enough to meet ADA, so I don't, we were putting any concrete across West Douglas. But the gravel streets and entrances will all have concrete, so it will be fully blind.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yep.
So there is a sidewalk across the bridge on that side, right?
Correct.
So you can ride a bike. It's just real narrow.
It's narrow, yeah. It's probably about four foot wide or something, but it's an old bridge, so.
Going to keep using that.
Going to have ADA. Correct. But yeah, so the new path will tie right into the sidewalk over the bridge. Oh, yeah, good question. Thanks, Dustin. But we'll give you a prize on how that progresses along. It'll be exciting to see it come forward. Uh, I wanted to touch upon the Seaclin project resurfacing of uh North Douglas there. Uh, bids were open October, received October sixth. And uh, stuck with our, our team and I believe the council authorized us to secure funding. But they're not clear, they actually have more of the bids, is that correct?
That's correct.
So the con- for the, the bid documents require the contractor hold the bid for sixty days, which will maybe December sixth. Uh, I was going to ask, would it be allowed over the council to consider reporting the bid at the next meeting of November twenty-seventh? Um, so we can stay within the sixty days?
Yep.
Okay. So we'll let them get that on the agenda then next meeting. Uh, sanitary sewer study for the residents on Eleventh Street. Uh, rented a bit of a stafeu, there's two water lines, one on each side of the street already. Um, KDT state requirements require at least ten foot vertical, or I see the horizontal separation. Between those water lines and the sewer line. And there's an area where we're not quite getting that ten foot on. But sewer line right down the middle, and we don't quite have ten foot inside of. Of the sewer line. So KDT has asked for the city to, if possible, excavate the existing water lines in terms of what material type they are. What kind of jointing they are, and come up with a plan. They will allow less than ten foot. We're going to maybe case that new sewer line in some form, things like that. So. The city is working, now they got their back truck up running, will be working to uh. Under those lines and check what kind of material, the plastic, uh. Cast iron or things like that. And then get that information to KDT, you know, with a part plan. So that's taking a little bit to get all that ass together. Uh, I don't have anything new on the parking of the library. Dustin, have you got any updates? What's going on there?
Have they voted on a contract or anything that the uh?
For the parking?
Yeah.
Well, it's been a long time since we've talked about it. I don't think they have, yeah. Yeah.
I don't know if there's any more involved with Kirk of Michael now.
Michael, do you remember?
Say, we're just going way, you know, the study from the.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, you want me to keep this on here just for monitors or pay it off the current Michael list? Right, we have an.
You can take it on.
Okay, go ahead and do that. Uh, last thing I had was on the cost care application for reconstructing Third Street. Uh, we got word from one envy that said they talked to KODA and they're supposed to announce selected projects on the twentieth of November. If you'd be following that announcement for a slide. That's what I got through today.
Very good. Any good questions for John? Concerns? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine. And this is the um. Property mitigation. Oh, this one. So property mitigation.
One more time.
I, in response to, in response to the feedback I got from council at the last meeting, I added two clauses. I worked with Melissa on this as well. Um, but I added two clauses. One is a no compete clause, which I knew was a concern from council. So I just added um. Instead of the city councils compended to fostering competitive environment, acknowledge it's the importance of not competing above providers in the provision of property mitigation services. And um, the other uh, the other provision that I added was um. The requirement that we'll have to reevaluate these prices once a year. Which I know was two concerns that were given to me. And Melissa did, Melissa did verify that this is legal. That is, it is a normal practice.
Melissa, I'm not disputing you.
No.
Okay.
I mean, that the city employees could go.
Yes. But as long as we follow the established nuisance abatement process, it's up in our name, said by the council. I just know that um it gets really expensive using KIMs. A KIM helps with the real difficult properties. But we can mitigate a lot of the smaller ones to continue. I also. When I'll use this as a segue, we're also doing some volunteer opportunities to try to also help people mitigate their properties so that we're not relying solely on. Um, property mitigation. But my targets of those programs is simply seniors and people who aren't able to mitigate the properties themselves.
Mr. Mayor, I'm with the we adopt resolution number two zero two three dash zero nine, resolution establishing city equipment rates for property mitigation.
Hold on a second.
Council script field has made a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero nine. Uh, which discusses property mitigation rates. Counselor Hanson has seconded that motion. Any concerns? The council has? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Square gets in trouble. Not an apple guy, sorry. Um. All right, moving on to new business. We have article A of the personnel policies and procedures. That is AAR dash twenty-three dash three sixteen. Dustin, you want to go through it?
Yes, please. Um, as part of my evaluation of our internal policies, I have started the rewrite of our personnel policies and procedures manual. It's easier for me to digest it one chapter at a time. Um, article A is one of the big ones. Um. I did add some policies and procedures that I felt were important from an HR perspective. Uh, a couple of highlights include I, I expanded upon our reporting procedures for harassment and hazing. I added some definitions for that. I also added some reporting procedures for uh. Various things that, that if the staff needs some guidance on how to approach a problem, this gives a clear guidance on how they can. Report it. Um, and I also brought it to the staff. And the department heads, and they added some additional feedback. So this has been a team effort so that this manual's for them. Um. And one of the highlights that they asked me to add, which I got a lot of positive feedback on is how to report if they didn't like me. It's so um, so uh, it gives them a clear guidance. I, I do emphasize that they have an issue with me. They see it with me first. But if they don't feel comfortable, they can come to anyone from you and report their concerns. And I'm not afraid to take criticism, so I, I added it. Be proud. Let the staff look through it and like, they all were happy with the process. They, some feedback I got from them is they're happy that I'm including them in the decision-making process. And so that I've gotten a lot of positive feedback. I'm going to do this for each additional chapter and I'll bring it to you. For your approval or feedback.
Go with this.
The department is going with this.
Yes, please. I would request anything.
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved to approve article A of personal, personnel policies and procedures as presented.
Hold on a second. Counselor Johnson has made the motion to approve article A of the personnel policies and procedures as written. Counselor Scrichfield. Has seconded that motion. Any discussions or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Closed? All right, motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is the discussion, the decision regarding holiday observances and holiday cases. It's a two-part thing. Uh, we got a holiday that's um, kind of a federal holiday, I think, three years ago, Juneteenth. And maybe some other issues and we also. Okay, so no, I'm sorry. And then um. We want to talk about giving folks some days off during the holidays. So um. Let's take it from here, Dustin.
I'm going to turn it over to Chief. As he's uh, he's helped me.
So I'll kind of handle the first part, the one, I'll, I'll try to, if not, we're going to have Kelly step in and we've done more. So I know I'll use last year, for example, Christmas, all of a Sunday. So the city observed Christmas as Monday, the twenty-sixth. Um. Part of my concern was I have staff that work Sunday, which is still Christmas Day. And they got nothing for working Christmas Day because they had to be there along with the water department. So. You start there. Within the city, somebody from the water department and the police department is, is on duty. The water department's about twenty-four hours a day. They have somebody here for the entire shift. Seven days a week during sixty-five days a year. Whereas police department has somebody here twenty-four hours a day during sixty-five days a year. So I, I posed last year, I said, hey, officers are working on Christmas. They're not getting anything. They're, they're, that's Christmas. They're like. But they get, they get their, a certain holiday on Monday. But they're working Christmas. So, okay, so we let it go, right? So it's had some conversations and then um, one of the things was, I'll dial up my text message. Um. So we just had Veterans Day um, this year. Um, Veterans Day generally always falls on this, is always Sunday? No, it rotates as well. It's always the eleventh. So um, the majorities are going to rotate, obviously, but like this year, Veterans Day falls on a Sunday or a Saturday. We observed it on, on Friday. So if you work that day, you've got nothing. A initial part of our question was, do we just consider Christmas as the one if you have to work the actual holiday? Do we? Give them that vacation day as well, or give them holiday pay as well? You know, if it's a Saturday or Sunday, are the only days that would, that would matter? Or do we do all holidays that fall on Saturday and Sunday that we observe a different day? So that was kind of what we were posting to you guys was. Um, right now, if you work a holiday and it's a Saturday or Sunday, since it's observed Friday or Monday. The employees who work that holiday get nothing. They just get regular hourly rate for their shift. Again. It, like, it could affect water or it could affect the street department or anybody else had to come in for an event, you know, a disaster or whatnot. But. Generally speaking, it's just the police department or the water department. So that was, that was A was thoughts on us paying. The actual holiday on the actual holiday. Still, they get the observed time and the officer who worked the observed day would get what we all get. But on the holiday itself, when it's a Saturday or Sunday, should we allow them to have holiday pay or just keep it at the regular straight pay? That's.
So what's the difference in holiday pay and straight pay right now?
Was it double time? Holiday pay, if you work a holiday, whether it be right now, it's the observed holiday or a holiday during the weekday, it's double time.
But because it falls on the weekend and then you get a day.
Yes, they get the, so like, I don't know, you guys might be a little different too. Like with um, Veterans Day was fine because it was a Friday and a Saturday. So my staff that worked Friday also worked Saturday. So they got. Eight hours, they got their shift Friday. For double time because that was the observed day.
Right.
Then they worked Saturday, got nothing, but they also got eight hours. Of paid leave because they, they should have got the day off if somebody has to be here. And then there's kind of rotation. Well, yeah, sometimes.
Uh, like us, uh, like this. Uh, Thanksgiving, okay? So like Thanksgiving, we have. A person working Thanksgiving Day. And then we get the Friday, you know, because it's, it's a holiday too. And uh, but like in, on Christmas. We'll have somebody working on Christmas, like he says. Uh, but there is like the uh. Uh, holidays that. We have the day off before. And some, some people have where we work that one person who works it. So they'll get it, which is fine. Um, but if that other person works. On uh, the following day, which is, is actually the Veterans Day. Like he said. That person wouldn't get his. Extra pay, just like he says. So. But the way we work it usually is whoever works. The, the holiday and it lands on the weekend. We just have that person work that Friday. But he gets a holiday pay and then we work it and then you don't have to worry about. Getting extra pay on that holiday weekend.
Somebody still have to be here to cover that shift and they're not making nothing for it.
Right, but usually the way we work it is. We make it so that whoever's working at holiday.
Works the observed day.
Or works the observed day and then they, so they get the actual. Uh, holiday. Um, that's what it usually been go lately, so.
And we're not able to mitigate that within the police department because you work Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Christmas is Sunday, observed on Monday, that's the next shift. And it was just, that would be a disaster. Try to change those days around, it wouldn't work.
So what you're asking is that the obs- uh, the weekend. Holiday.
The people who don't work the observed holiday, but still have to work the actual holiday to cover it down, hey, those people who.
But I think we pay them both. It's like if it's a Friday.
Right.
Observed, my guys' staff works Friday and Saturday.
Right.
So our big question is, so it's got one, kind of two parts. So do we just consider Christmas as the only one that just falls on? Or do we consider any holiday that falls on the weekend? That's, I mean, that's one A, one B. And we felt Christmas was like, yeah, come on guys, Christmas, Saturday or Sunday or not, like the Christmas, we've got to be here, right? But we also buy, about the other holiday, it's not, Veterans Day is as important, but it doesn't have the same arguments as Christmas.
I don't see a problem with it. Does anybody have a problem with it or? As long as you can administrate it on software standpoint and a budget standpoint and all that.
Yeah, so I know from Cali's standpoint, well, even for us, so when my staff clocks in, they clock in with a different code because the holiday worked, so it already does the math for us for Cali. And then Cali and I discussed, you know, we believe that it's minimal as it will be to us. You know, department head wise and budgeting, it means the world to us that we have to be here. I feel like we could find what it's going to cost us within our budget to accommodate it. Even though it wasn't budgeted for, it's, it's enough that we can, we can make work. And it really wouldn't, it doesn't talk into all of anything else or nature this year. This would be a next year thing, there's no more holiday on the weekends between now and then, but.
Yeah, I, and, yeah, I think, yeah, absolutely. And while, while we're evaluating this, I know that call-in is also, can also be an issue with this. I know what I'm seeing is the line, uh, the guy who got called in on a holiday actually got shattered because they didn't, they should have gotten double time for being a holiday, but they got call-in pay instead, which was a lot less. Which was really stupid for them, but I don't think I'd be saying that tonight, but I, I think that's coming in the other way. That's partly why we thought it was a good idea to evaluate it now because I'm in the middle of rewriting our manual.
Right, and that's, so that's what you're getting at, and so I need to.
One thing we need to take in is if you call in sick day before day after that holiday.
Federal law doesn't allow anybody, so you can only get eighty-four hours, so.
That you don't get that.
Yeah, it automatically takes that off.
Yeah.
Steve, if you were talking about next year, later it's fall on Monday and so does March, it can date.
Yes, but what falls on Saturdays and Sundays is what pays us out, if a holiday falls on a Saturday or a Sunday.
Oh, you don't care about that?
No, because we're already off. We don't need to be observing on the actual physical holiday on those. It's just the weekends that, that kind of get a little more. So that's A. And then B, Cali obtained a part of her list or she got an email from the other, from the group that said, how are you guys doing Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, since it falls on a Monday, Christmas falls on a Monday? And her overwhelming response from the respondents were, uh, we're giving them off Friday or Monday and Tuesday, Tuesday for Christmas Eve. And then twenty-third Monday for Christmas Day. So that, because most people, if you're going to town, so at Christmas, you're going to do it on Christmas. Well, it's hard to go to Colorado or somewhere and then turn around and come right back to work Monday morning. Uh, wasn't something we had thought about, it was just an email that she got and said, well, we're talking about one thing, why not stick it in there and see what you guys thought, just as a, as a curiosity? Cali, did I get that?
Perfect, nailed it.
And she just decided that, you know, it's something like that. I mean, every year it's going to be different every year, right? Yeah, I think this type of situation is going to occur. You'll say, hey, listen, we're going to do what everybody else does.
So my other question while we're talking about this too is like, so this is obviously a Sunday, Monday situation. If we have Christmas Saturday or Christmas Eve, Saturday, Christmas on Sunday, that's also something else we probably need to think about too is like how we're going to observe these holidays if we're going to make Christmas Eve an observed holiday. Do we want to do, if that situation arises Saturday and Sunday, do we do Friday and Monday? I mean, it's just something that we probably need to hash out for the future so that we kind of know what to expect.
It's only Christmas that we run into this dilemma pretty much.
Yeah, just historically, I mean, wait, they're a lot longer. They've always done the Thursday after Thanksgiving's always been it. They all, the city is pretty good. We gave up a holiday years ago for that.
Colorado's day.
Okay, I knew we gave up something many years ago for that, so. Um, but yeah, it's, we didn't really thought about this, it's just something that came up in her list or, and it's like, how are we going to handle it? I don't know, you know, so it was just, while we had that work and holiday thing on there, we were just curious about this. And I, I get, I think your point, Mr. Mayor, is can he make these decisions without having to bring it here every year when it changes and this and that? I think the answer is yes, if you give us the opportunity for him to make it. And one of the things I do enjoy about Mr. Stanwall is that he talked about in our policy, he does come to us. I think that we all value, as we recall when we ran the interim, we all value our department meeting on Tuesdays. And he gives plenty of opportunity to thoughts, comments, complaints, concerns. And that's one of the first things came up with, you know, that's why the city leadership was us, you know, as we get together weekly and kind of come up with things and what can we do to make this? Not that it's a bad place, but what can we do to entice and make things better? Yeah, and if you guys are willing to give him that, that blessing to make these decisions. And I, I know with him, he's going to lead on us as well and it's going to be a collective effort, but that's, I think that's up to you guys.
Right, I'm comfortable with it. I think we probably need to vote on the, the authority piece. Yeah, the double pay, you know, the double. I think that needs to be voted, and then the rest, I think you can just discuss because every year's going to be different. As long as I have your blessing to go ahead and move forward and make decisions on your behalf. And you know, put it a little bit in context, we're talking about pay for two people for the city, right? One police officer and one.
Me, three police officers, this nation, I explain. Now, I do give my officers the option, if you wanted to want that day off, you certainly can take it because you have it, because I have the swing officer. But I'm not going to force somebody to take that day off, you know, like you have to take it off as you're not paying double time. I don't know, like that's a little bit of a blow there, but so the most would be three police officers and one water plant operator. Yeah, it's not, or if something happens, yeah, we're paying people anyway to come in, it's regardless of the holiday or they're all getting paid, you know, it's a bad habit, so.
This isn't a good kind of.
No, no, that's what we figured, we figured we could eat this within our budgets, but it's still going to be in the world of the people that we're giving it to.
Melissa, do we need to vote on this or?
I mean, it's a little worriser to go on the salary piece of it, the pay piece of it, but you don't have to. And then if you're just going to delegate that authority, that's in your realm. You can make a motion to delegate that authority, that's.
Okay, so I think, I think we can vote on this as presented because it has all that in there about pay.
Like I worded that, just as presented, and that was the easiest way to do it.
And then. And then the, it can be asked. Captain. Man. Mr. Mayor. Um, also, and maybe I need to educate myself, the council meeting, the second council meeting in December, is that automatically canceled? No, which we, I mentioned it last year, it's a good idea, but Angela was like, no, we need, we need that meeting.
We need to have it, yeah, generally historically.
Yeah. So it's something that falls on Monday, since we're discussing Christmas and all that, do we want to decide? We shifted it last year, we did shift it, we did, we just didn't nix it, so. Understandable, so it sounds like we need to make a motion on this presented. Then we need to give Dustin the authority to shift holidays around and then we need to vote on moving the council meeting to December twenty-sixth as a testimony?
The seventh, we're now saying that December twenty-sixth is a holiday.
So the twenty-seventh, what did you say?
I think the big thing for us when he goes through and does our policy subsection G, which talks about fifth, I don't know if that's a subsection, but now we have that guidance, you can put it in and when you get it, we don't have to have this.
No, so you have already.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve agenda item A I R twenty-three dash three two, the article allowing city staff who work actual holiday, paid at holiday work rate. And then to give authority to the administrators to figure shift holidays or all twelve days, observed holidays as he sees fit.
And then do we add the move to the city? Now, second city council meeting.
Oh, and then we're going to move the second city council meeting to Wednesday, December twenty-seventh due to Christmas. Thank you, because I don't want to say it again.
Uh, Council Hanson has made a motion to approve the regarding holiday observances and holiday day A I R twenty-three dash three twenty. Um, also made a motion to move the city council meeting till December twenty-seventh, which is a Wednesday. And also to give a city administrator authorization to move holidays and observe holidays around as he sees fit with his department feedback into the future. Uh, this motion was seconded by Council Schriftfield. Any concerns?
I have a question.
Sure.
Historically, has the city given staff off for the full day on Christmas Eve on December twenty-fourth? Has it, because I mean, I know it's not been a work day for.
I've been here, we've had the full day off and this will be my third Christmas here.
In my set, and I think we've been a couple that were a half day and those were just decisions made, I believe, by Mr. Borland over a couple of years, which we got an email the day before that said, hey, tomorrow's a half day, but I think the other one was a full day, or this will be, oh, we get this count, but we've had a couple, that was just a half day, I believe, like, so I think the board just gave us that authority, but in my.
All right, hearing now, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Department heads. And before we leave that subject, we talked about authorizing them, last year we were authorizing two additional days. We want to talk about the, this time, or since we just did it. Talk about it two weeks, two weeks, okay, all right, you got it. That's Chief where we get into, you've got twelve-hour shifts and everybody else has got eight-hour shifts. How do we, how do we balance that out? So that discussion, you know, you can have that with Dustin. We want to, we want to give some comp days.
Right.
Yeah, you guys, because I mean, I spent many a minute thinking about how do we make this equal? You guys discuss it and we'll put it on the agenda for, um, two weeks from now.
And we handled that last night, we just, I wouldn't say we, I didn't, but the overwhelming majority of my staff got the twelve hours because it's yeah, you use it or lose it, you know, there's no reason they should have to give the eight like everybody else and then use four hours on their own vacation to get a full day off. So we mitigated last year just fine, Cali got it set in the system and it's, my staff automatically gets twelve now, so it pretty well doesn't work for, just no reason, that's the shift that we're on. And in the event that we ever do go back to eight hours or ten hour shift, we'll just shift it back for that, so.
So you got it figured out, so you would give everybody else two eight-hour shifts, he'd have two twelve-hour shifts, everybody's fine with that. As far as I know, I haven't gotten any.
You did get any day, you got no such a thing.
Yeah, and, and then we, we would let you administer, we'd talk about, hey, you let, you make him take a day before Christmas. Say, hey, you're going to have to wait till January for your day, or, you know, let him handle that. I mean, I say we just deal with it right now, there's no sense in waiting two weeks, that's pretty simple. I thought it was going to be a lot of tugging more, you know, trying to figure out, okay.
Am I right, Cali? It's already set up in there, it was a very simple process with those last one that we got from the A I R.
Yeah. I can just set up whatever holidays in the system and it will, it will just know that they're holidays as long as I tell it that.
And then put that on the books, you just hit the button and it goes on our book.
And the people appreciated that last year, you got some people.
I think so, and I say that unfortunately I got a couple officers that don't like to take time off, so I'm like, Ron, you got to make some days off here, you know? But we also didn't have another officer at that point, so it makes it so much easier now that I've got somebody on each shift to mitigate my, my days off, so yeah, it's just, it's they loved it, but it's sometimes just like, I don't, I don't stay home, you know?
Right.
They, yes, they just, they, they, they appreciate it.
Okay, Dustin, did you feel like they appreciated it last year? I didn't get any negative feedback, Mr. Mayor. Okay. Why do we need to vote on that, Melissa, or just give Dustin the authority to authorize each one, each employee two days off with the police department, they've got twelve hours, and it's everybody else that's eight hours.
Yeah, they're fine, we can just give him authority unless you're, I mean, if he's working on policies too, he can have that.
My only question would be is how much time do we have to use it? Because sometimes for us with private, yeah, how would you guys like, because I believe last year it was like, we're giving this to you, but you only have two months and we came back to department and he said, we, that's not enough time.
Right.
To mitigate this.
I'd say like, March. You guys and then you guys.
Okay, yeah, well, there's not a, I mean, there's going to be a drop dead date, obviously, but we need to make sure there's something we can all fit in each department, prior to the nation.
I'd say before the meeting, a year from now, you know, that would.
Yeah, I mean, that's me doing it. Yeah, yes.
So, everybody okay with that? All right, so we make a motion to give Dustin the authority to authorize two work days. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion I would give Dustin the authority to give two work days to city staff.
What's that good?
Council Johnson has made a motion to authorize, uh, city administrator Dustin Stanwall the ability to give each city employee two days, two work days off. And Council Hanson has seconded that motion, he has the authority to do this. Hearing now, in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, moving on, so department heads, so Chief, you're up, so Police Department calls for service, agenda item report A I R twenty-three dash three one seven.
I didn't have anything else that I could on there, just appreciate all the pairs that brought the rules and goblins to our event. Um, I think so, about three hundred people was our guests, just kind of out with the goodie bags that we made, I think it was a pretty good turnout. Been inside, of course, we could have done outside and I got heck for that, but the, the, I mean, the city, it was called, it was called, so we, we appreciate that. Like I said, all the first responders and military, they came and supported it. Um, and then, uh, just for a little tidbit, so if anybody, anybody wanted to know about, I'm sure you're more on these, hopefully we're getting down here and slide on that, so.
Good luck, you know, with that, very good. Um, Chief, do you have anything for Fire Department?
Thank you for your time. Yeah. I so much want to say, okay, now that we've done that, what about the Fire Department for those twenty-four hour shifts? I actually, I want to come to you guys, I've actually got some good news. Um, and so I had told Dustin about this, we have been, uh, with your blessing and whatnot, have gone ahead and been pursuing some other grants. I was here and did a presentation about three months ago about the project that we're going after called the Knox Box. Um, I got a notice last Monday, um, that we have been successful in, what's the North Central Regional, something, something. Um, you know, has awarded a little over eleven thousand dollars. And so I am supposed to be getting, their, their board is supposed to come to our meeting on Thursday um, and present us with that check. Um, but I thought it was appropriate to let you know before it hits there to everybody else. Um, and so with that, we were going to, as soon as I had that in hand, I've been, right, in touch with, with Knox Box. In that funding that we were able to get for that, we will be able to give the activating pads for both the units that I have chosen on Fire Department as well as with EMS. Um, and so when we put that in, I visited with Nathan from the EMS, so then both Fire and EMS will have those, those spark keys. Um, and then for those businesses and or individuals that opted and get in with the program, um, that both Fire and EMS will be, will have that access. So that's a bit of good news, I wanted to bring that to you guys and let you know that we are moving forward with that. Um, I do have several businesses that have said, yes, we're on board. And then I was like, okay, hold till I actually have the ability to do it. And so we have, I should have that check presented to us Thursday ninth. Um, and the other thing, we have applied for just a couple of other grants. Um, one that's, I think was a five thousand, another one that's a one thousand that we haven't heard back home from. Um, that will be involved in just simply a, the advancement of that program there as well as some of the equipment. So we are pursuing those. Um, we still haven't heard anything back on the grant that we filed for the, the bunker gear, so we'll, we'll just play that by ear. Uh, the other, the other thing that I do want to just bring up, and it sounds like I do continually just beat a dead horse, and that's not my intention. My intention is to, is to keep you aware of what goes on. One of the critical things that I have talked about every time that I've got it is this understanding what an ISO rating does and how that, an ISO rating is very, very influential on what premiums are paid by constituents for insurance. And the fact that, that a small town carries a two-five-nine is, is an incredible feat. And, and I can say those numbers, but unless you're into it, um, I had, I had one of the reps in the other day and I told him that and he was like, tell me that again, and he goes, I've never heard of that in a, in a town this size. Why, why is that a big deal? Well, because it hinges on, it has three things, it has to do, um, on the capability of the Fire Department. It has to do on the training, uh, the, the certified training department. It has to do on the water supply of the city and it has to do with the dispatch capability of dispatch. All four of those elements play into that, and so we've been progressive, the city's been progressive on that. And we have, we, we, we have reaped the rewards of that. In that, I am required then that there, our equipment has to be certified so that when we, when this comes up, that we can say, yes, it has passed this. Um, and it came to my knowledge that a lot of our. Um, and it came to my knowledge that a lot of our trucks had not been certified for actually several years, and so. We set that up, we did a certification. Um, had the gentleman, Casey Stevenson, come in, he's actually the, the fire mechanic for Salina Fire, great guy, a friend of mine. Um, and came in and we did it, um, so there's a good and a bad, when we certify a truck, um. They are tested hard, I mean, literally, that's, that's the purpose of them. And so there, there's overall passing and then issues that need to be resolved, and so, and we have been, we have made a lot of really good. A lot of good progress as far as, you know, they have safety lighting on, they have to have so many, if you have balls burned out, you gotta get a big, and we, we're doing it really good with that. The biggest thing that I want to say to you though is, and I've said this before, is our, my frontline engine, which in our binocular is five-one-four. Um, that truck was specced out in nineteen ninety-six, and then by the time we got it purchased, so it's my frontline truck. That's twenty-five years old, and I kept saying, I'm, I'm trying to educate you that these costs. That truck failed every test. It is a glorified brush truck, when they, when ISO comes in and looks at that, they say, that's not a fire truck. Because it can pass, um, it can't pass the minimum pump test, it can't pump the pressure test, it can't pass the mid, it can't pass the highs. Will it still pump water? Yes, do we still use it? Yes. But to understand that the frontline truck is twenty-five years old. And when it's coming, it's tested, so for example, that's a thousand GPM pumper, which means. At a hundred and fifty PSI pulling from a draft without a water supply, it has to be able to do that. It has to be able to pump the gallons and it has to be able to pump the pressure, and it, it can't couple us. Um, and it's been rebuilt once, and so there's just a plethora of things, it's like we're, we're babying it along. Um, but I, you need to understand, so one of my, one, one of my fire reps was in, they stayed caught, and I've known these guys for years. But I said, I keep telling them, this is a six hundred thousand dollar truck, and he says, you're too low, it's six hundred and fifty thousand, because it's four wheel drive. And I said, if we order today and we had it specced, he said, you're two, two and a half years out. Right now, so I, I keep saying that. That, yes, I certified some other trucks, you know, the aerial is certified, um, two of the other engines are certified, but they're running a backup role. So they're not getting the abuse, so I still have, matter of fact, I took one of the old trash trucks. And paid the money to certify it, and it pump wise, it hit wonderful. So I'm still certified with four class F, it's called a class A engine, three class A engines and a class A aerial, which is awesome. But we need to continue just to be thinking in like, I know it's a lot of money, I know we're talking about grants, I know we're talking about applying for stuff, and we will pursue those. But the reality of it is, is there are first line primary engine that is out as far as ISO, when they look at that, we won't even classify that as a truck. Because it cannot pump. What it needs to pump to make the certification. So that is something that's like, I know it's money, I know the time will come up, we ask for money, we're talking about things that's going on, but in the same time. The, the, and I've, I've made this case too, but in, in all the departments are doing this, the, the, the target is like, in a community like this is, is run an engine for twenty years. Plan on specking it out and moving it into a re- a reserve role. In that twenty to twenty-five, extending that life for another five, maybe another ten. So that at the end of thirty years, an absolute max at thirty-five, that it's been replaced. Well, as far as engines, at, being it was a ninety-eight, incident of the aerials in oh-six already, and so what I, what I keep saying is. We've got them. And I'm able to, you know, one of the old engines that I was able to certify is an eighty-six. Now, I was able to certify it and we're doing so, but I'm just, I keep saying that, it's like, keep in mind, the years go ticking by. And, and literally, I'm probably gonna end up re- being mandatory to retire out before we ever get another engine in here, but I'm trying to lay the groundwork for the next guys. And I'm trying to lay the groundwork. That, just that, that in order to maintain a certification. It's really hard to get, and we don't want to be going backwards. And so I know we're not gonna answer tonight, I'm just like, this has got to be on your mind, but the fact that we ran through the test. And they are, they are bigger, so there's a draft test, there's a pump test, there's a pressure test. Um, there, there, there's a holding pattern that they have to be in, and they're run extremely hard for now. But it passed none, absolutely none, and so. Do we still use it? Yes, we do, because it has equipment on it and it still pumps water. But it doesn't have the capability to do what it really needs to do, it's hard when they look at it, so. There's a bunch of, I mean, there's good news, so we've got grants for, for, you know, moving on that. I do want you to be of what's going on in that there, and as far as, you know, runs, I mean. Uh, you know, our run's been upgraded last week, I think we've had like, what, seven or eight calls during the last week in the tally, and that's just what it goes, it goes in spur, so. Um, anyhow, but unless somebody has any questions, the biggest thing is, we're good news, we got a grant. Um, I'll be getting that check this week, as soon as I've got that, and we're gonna order the stuff. Um, and as soon as we're able to get that, and the, the PR policy of getting other businesses on board, um, with the Knox Box thing, it's a good program.
I will look at what uh chief has said, um. I can tell you, everybody in Ellsworth has a great insurance rate when it comes to the ISO. Number, uh, but when I quote in other towns, I can literally be quoting somebody who lives. Our department, and it may not hit a three like Ellsworth does. And so, um, I, I can't vouch for the fact that that does affect your insurance programs, so. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Congratulations. All right, I, I think we're gonna do an executive towards the end, right? All right, um, so city attorney, do you have any, have any other comments, uh, before we do exactly? Not from there. Oh, I'm sorry, come on up.
Yeah, I'll. We're, we're working on finding get these fire hydrants all back in. You know, far as of tomorrow, we're going to work on a little fire hydrant on web. Um, we're gonna do, literally just. Get it done, and we're gonna have to shut down water. And we already, I already talked to Rick Plains, already talked to the three daycare facilities. Tell them then, but hey, we're gonna be shutting this down. Hopefully, we can get it done in an hour to three hours. Um, and then uh I talked to, also I talked to um. A fire uh hydrant guy. And uh we talked about, you know, getting these six inch lines in here eventually. So I talked to him and he said that what we can do. Is instead of paying for a four inch. Fire hydrant. We can make the valve the six inch and reduce it down to four. And now we have a six inch fire hydrant there. And we can only paint the top so that they know that this is not the six inch line. You know, it's just a four inch line. And then that way, when we do do that. We don't have to buy another whole fire hydrant, it saves us about six thousand dollars every time. Um, so, um, I don't know. Do you have any thoughts about, you know, that or not, or? That would, I'm, I'm trying to make it so that, you know, we're not spending. I'm not gonna be here all the time, but I'm trying to make it so that we're not spending. Money after money, you know, trying to replace these other ones. You know, when we can replace it just once.
And I appreciate that.
Plus, you can just standardize it. We have to just find six inch fire hydrants.
Well, that's, you know, and like I said, and then we just paint them. You know, to, and we're doing pressure tests. On a lot of our fire hydrants already, uh, but they, they talked to him already about it. Uh, and uh, we're, you know, we're working on it, it just takes time. You know, and uh, and the pot molding for the lines that, that, uh. Charles Michael, we've been trying to possible to find out what those lines are. You know, uh, and that, so.
Hopefully, they're, they're part of the hearing.
Well. I don't think they are. I'm, I'm pretty sure we're gonna have to put a casing over, over that sewer hole. Um, just to be on the safe side. Um, but that's something that Jill will have to probably agree on or whatever, but. But I'm pretty sure we're gonna have to. Put a casing over it. At least so far down anyway. But uh, but yeah, I had a guy working on it, but. Then, you know, there are certain things that come up, but you can't keep, keep going on it, you know, so you have to shut it off and then. Try and get back on it again. But uh. I'm trying to do some good.
Well, I appreciate you coming to help us, David.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll put a good word in the social security when you go in.
Can I add one thing, just to go to what Sasser, who talks about painting the hydrants? Uh, so NFPA has a color coding for a hydrant, so when we show up. That I can all, I can instantly look at that hydrant and I can know what the capability that is, so if it's red, it's less than five hundred, and then we have orange, yellow and blue.
Yeah.
And so they move up, and so they, they do a PTO test on it, we can know the gallon, so and if we show up, and I was like, oh, that's a blue hydrant, hook to it and go, we're good to go. Because that's fifteen hundred or better.
Yeah.
Um, and that's what we talked about, we talked about painting the hydrants, is it's color coded, so when we show up. It's like, because we well know that there's. There, there's hydrants that look really good and even replace hydrant, but it's not gonna flow anything, that's what.
And we just paint the top, we don't paint the whole hydrant, we just paint the top so they can see they're on the top. You know, so it's not gonna take a lot of money to paint that top, you know, uh, so. But it helps them know what the PSI is and what the flow is. And it helps us down the road saying, okay, you know, this helps the insurance also, like they say. You know, that if a state guy comes in and looks at all these fire hydrants, they can say, okay, well, yeah, you know, these guys have. Done all the stuff, and so now, you know, we could. So, that's all I want to say.
I appreciate it. All right, um. So Melissa, you have no comments, uh, Callie, do you have any?
I'm good, I'm just gonna get off because I'm going to dinner at seven, I'm here at Clerk Institute in Wichita, so. Um, do I need to be on the executive session or am I good?
Um, do we have all of this salary information and all of those types of things?
I have it.
Okay, we got all the data, we're fine. Okay. Um, no, you don't have to, that's fine.
Okay, well, call me if you need me.
Okay, we'll do it.
Okay, thanks.
Mercy, if you try again, I'll let you in.
All right, city administrator, any comments?
I do, I just wanted to thank David and the water crew, uh, one of the things I found out, uh, after all the changes, is a lot of our water hydrants were leaking. And so I've had them as a, as sort of a skill builder as well as solve a problem, they're gonna start replacing a hydrant every couple of weeks. As just to, to eliminate the leaking as well as making sure they're painted the right way and. We've discovered a lot of places where we can improve our valving through this process, like there's a couple of neighbors over the weekend, the mayor, you found out about? They, it's lower than what we would like in terms of pressure, so we're starting to look at, work on our valves and get into exercising, I think, and so. A lot of good things are happening in the water department. I also wanted to thank everybody who participated in uh Friday, Saturday night's cleanup. I had seven staff members come help, and David was one of them. I also had, I think, seven or eight, nine volunteers, sorry, nine, thank you, including the Donnelly brothers. They came to help out, so, and we were, uh, if you received some, any feedback, we were only able to clean five of the. Total of all applicants, so um, we're gonna move those applicants to the next round, which I've already said in February. So, or excuse me, April. So, um, we're gonna do it again and make it a twice a year event, it's, it was really successful and I've got a lot of positive feedback.
Good, yeah, thank you. Anything else? Okay, all right, city council, um, council Bernard, do you have any comments?
I do not.
All right, very good. All right, Wayne, you have any?
I just want to thank everybody who did come out and vote, and all people who reached out to me, um, I'm sure you're being good hands, don't lose. Been here before.
All right, very good. Anything else, Wayne?
Yep.
Eric, any comments? Jessica?
No.
Garcia?
No.
All right, on to me, um. So, an article's written in the paper, asked for my opinion of some things that are going on in the county. And so I'll make a few comments here and may make some later, I need to find out more, I want to be educated, um, but. If I'm not mistaken, a city resident is also a county resident, correct? We're, we're dual residents, so. We're kind of in this, you know, we have to kind of represent our constituents, but at the same time, if it doesn't. You know, we really need to be a team with the county commissioners and the county attorney, we all need to be working together. There are gonna be moments where we really need each other, so we don't need any friction between us, so. I don't know everything that's going on, but there's some things going on in the county, and so what I'll say um to the constituents, Mary Schmidt. Is um. You know, when you have a, a situation like she's talking about, she wanted to communicate with the county attorney and wasn't able to get the information. I think the next step for her is just to go to a commissioner's meeting and to. Bring it up the food chain, I think when you are courteous and you don't have the results at a lower level. You know, it's best to, in a, in a light way, say, all right, you know, that, that's fine. Um, I'm just gonna let you know, I'm gonna go speak to the next level, and you're entitled to do that. But you do so in a courteous, polite way, go to a commissioner's meeting, might have all kind of information she can get. And then we'll kind of take it from there, I've always had great luck in doing that, you'd be surprised. At how sometimes at a higher level, your voice is heard even better. Um, they don't sometimes get the feedback and they appreciate it when they, when they know the whole story, so. Let them deal with that, let them, you know, be the professionals that they are in. Uh, it just as a reminder, it does have a little bit to do with Open Meetings Act and some concerns, so people are watching us, you know. When the mics go off, or, we need to make sure the mics are off when we talk, make sure we're not talking about business. So there are people out there watching and listening, so I'll send. You know, a, a video of it, and I was like, wow, okay, so it's just a, another piece of this is for us to be really careful, really conscious of how we communicate. You know, the end of this council and then the next one, you know, to be really careful. So I'll just leave it at that, find out what she finds out at the commissioner's meeting, and we'll go from there, um. Mentioned Cowtown, uh, that's exciting, the, the genie's awesome, um. Support it, you know, as much as you can financially, with labor. Uh, you know, it's one of those things that, it's still a little shady, I mean, may, may happen in twenty-four, and. We don't get volunteers and the, the money's not working out, it could be we're back in the same boat again, so. You know, it's not a forever thing, it's just we hope this is a stepping stone, but I think what was happening is, there were people who were excited. And we couldn't just keep saying, hey, unless we have fifteen people. You know, we're not gonna do this, that's not fair, they're excited, so I'll probably stay with that group until August, till the, I'll just provide my labor and. Kind of be one of those people that does that, so, um. And I'm just trying to think, I had something else I wanted to say. Um, oh. So, Don, this is for you too, that one of the things we changed is that the council president will be voted in in January, not in May. And, you know, that's a very serious job, because at any moment, you know, I could be out, I could, something could happen to me, and you become the mayor, so. Whoever you elect needs to be ready for that responsibility and really want that responsibility. And I think that I, I, my general observation is Wayne has done a lot of work. You know, as, as of all of you, but I think a little bit more is done. Probably in that position, don't you think, at times, because they, they tend to coordinate the others, so if, if you do take a look for each one of you to want to do that job. And, but just to understand, there's a little bit more involved, um, than maybe some of the other positions, so. Um. Think about that, it's probably, is that the first meeting in January or just by the end of January, do you remember?
First meeting in January.
So it's like, we'll swear on it, and then one thing we'll do is say, all right, who's the next council president, so. Um, but each one of you do a great job, you know, um. So with that said, I don't have anything more to say, I would think we're ready for the executive session. And how many minutes do you think we need? And who's gonna be involved in it? It would be just.
Melissa and Melissa.
Melissa, because Callie's not gonna be there.
Yeah.
Okay. Ten minutes?
Yep.
Okay. Starting at six fifty-eight. Running to seven.
For what reason?
Um, it's raised, it's south.
Non-elected person.
Not elected, ever. He's Orlando, yeah, yeah.
So is Dustin included or Don included?
No.
Okay, so Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn into executive step and to include government, uh, city council, city attorney. Uh. And come out at seven-ten. For non-elected, for matters of non-elected personnel.
All right, we should already open that.